I said, "I am." Shirley isn't ready to talk.
I'm gonna take my phone off for...
I got my deposit card.
Yes.
My cell phone got my problem.
The deposit card. Is Jessica here?
Yeah.
Too shocked. I don't see her.
Is that Amy Archer?
It is.
But, because then I can use it, please.
They're cute.
They were kind of expensive.
Oh, really?
I'm gonna check the price on them.
Just wait.
Or see if local credit can do it.
Good afternoon. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting this Tuesday, April 17, 2018. If you wish to speak during the hearing of citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers, print your name and top it clearly, and return the card to our board assistant, Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you up to speak. First up, please stand for the flag salute from Venice High School's color guard under the direction of retired Master Gunnery Sergeant Frank Tocso. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See. Cut. And salute. Ready. Two. Post.
Thank you, Venice Color Guard. I wanted to begin this evening's meeting, or afternoon's meeting, with a quick statement, and quite frankly, it's changed a bit, is what I'd planned prior to coming in today. I know it is no secret that the last board meeting we had was full of color since then, but I wanted to remind everyone again why we are here, and that while we often can disagree, we can do it in a manner that is civil and have productive debate. I am incredibly encouraged about the work we did today, this afternoon. I think it's a testament to us being focused on exactly why we're here. And so I want to thank my board members for conducting themselves in the way as expected, and also for a very productive meeting. And I also want to thank the superintendent for preparing in very deep depth to allow us to have that productive meeting. So I just wanted to start that with a statement and say that it is an honor to work with everyone, and I look forward to a very positive, productive moving forward. So with that, I believe Jessica Gonzalez, is she here? No, she was going to be our two-time student representative. So then we'll move on to special presentations. Today's special presentation will be led by the Circus Arts Conservatory personnel to update us on the Sailor Circus. I would like to invite Scott Lempy, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Operations Officer, to the podium. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board members, superintendent, Mr. Hardy. You know, I think about the wonderful collaborative partnerships we have with various organizations in our community. One of them, I think, is our relationship with the Circus Arts Conservatory. A little bit of history, it was probably a dozen years ago... 2011? It feels like a dozen years ago. That we talked about this transition for the Sailor Circus away from the then Police Athletic League towards the Circus Arts Conservatory. And I can remember at the very front end of those conversations thinking, "This just kind of makes sense. Why would you not have the Sailor Circus as part of a wonderful organization like the Circus Arts Conservatory?" And that has proven to be true. Our relationship has only grown over time. When we entered into this agreement, I can remember sitting down with Pedro and his team, and he had just these incredible visions of where he wanted to take the program. A part of that vision was about the tent and the facility that's around the tent and the footprint of the Sailor Circus. And since we were talking about those, in our agreement, we included some language that said that the Circus Arts Conservatory could only do work on that campus with the written approval of the superintendent or his designee. Part of the reason we put that there is we wanted to be sure that our building official, your building official, permitted their work. So that has happened. Mr. Foley has issued a permit. In fact, I think that permit today is actually on an extension. But we're at a place where the work is about to begin, and just as we talked, we thought that might be a great opportunity for the Circus to be able to come in front of the board and give you just a little bit of an update on where they are, not only with their project, but with the program itself. So we're lucky enough today to have, I guess really, a four-person team at least. I think Pedro and Dolly need no introduction to anybody who's been around Sarasota for a long time. Jennifer Mitchell is their chief operating officer, and Nathan Renner is here representing Tandem Construction. And before I turn the podium over, I just want to talk about how I feel about Nathan being here. Tandem Construction did the renovation of Sarasota High School. And you have all visited that school. You see what a quality job they did. And so to know that the Circus Arts Conservatory is working with Tandem, and Nathan is the face of that project there, just gives me a tremendous comfort level that what's going to happen there is going to be equally as good as what you saw at Sarasota High School. So I have a lot of trust and confidence, not just in Nathan as a person, but in the company he represents in the form of Tandem Construction. So with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Dolly and Pedro and kick this thing up.
Thank you so much for having us. I just, my first appearance after having both of my hips replaced, so I'm very happy to be here, standing on two feet and not limping. Just want to say it's an honor and a privilege to be part of the Circus, to be part of Sarasota. I'm born and raised here. And knowing that this art form that we call Circus touches everybody in Sarasota, not only the children using the Circus Arts to enhance their learning, but also the elderly that are often forgotten in our nursing homes, and the wonderful children in Sailor Circus that we get to pass the torch on to them. And what great pride I have, especially with my students, if I'm not partial, to see them shine, to see their self-pride when they get down from their performance. That's something that money can't buy. I know personally. You know, nothing can replace that self-pride they receive. And the lessons that they learn, possibly they don't go on to be in the Circus professionally, but they learn lessons in Sailor Circus about self-discipline, about camaraderie, working with others, about pushing yourself, about hard work. And those lessons they take with them in life, no matter where they go, no matter what profession. So, performance, training, outreach, and legacy, I feel very passionately about each and every one of those four disciplines that we represent. And thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodman?
I think Dolly said it all. Thank you for this opportunity, board members, superintendent. Legacy, what an important word for Sarasota and their circus and their history. John Ringley moved the winter quarters from Bridgeport, Connecticut in 1927, and the Circus has continued to influence Sarasota and the area, and even today still has a positive influence. So the legacy continues, and that's part of what Dolly and I wanted to do, was bring back the living circus, but also continue the legacy of Circus in Sarasota and beyond. And I believe 21 years our organization has been based and founded in Sarasota. We've been doing some great stuff with the schools, nursing homes, as Dolly was saying, but it's not ended. We continue to look for new opportunities, new partnerships, new collaboration. And I want to echo what Scott Lempy said, you know, our partnership with the school board, the Sarasota School Board, is so great, it's so important, and it's such a positive outcome for students and everybody else who sees the shows. So we want to thank you for this opportunity, and now I'd like to introduce Jennifer Mitchell, our executive vice president.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I am going to share a little bit more detail about the Circus Arts Conservatory, and specifically the work we're doing in our educational initiatives. Our partnership actually with the school board of Sarasota County allows us to be a very unique nonprofit in the nation. And that is one that is, we are the only nonprofit that is putting on world-class professional performances, stewarding a youth training program, the Sailor Circus, America's longest-running youth circus, as well as using the Circus Arts as a medium in schools and healthcare. And so that umbrella is quite unique to this community, and it's afforded to all of us because of this partnership, and we're very grateful for that. For those of you that are new, this relationship has been ongoing, as Scott and Pedro said, since 2011, when Circus Sarasota took over the Sailor Circus. Currently, more than 200,000 people are benefiting from our performances and outreach every year. We are in over 35 elementary and middle schools engaging in circus science education, and more than 20,000 students in your school district's schools have been impacted by our teaching artists since 2012. And most importantly, and probably most uniquely, more than 1 million people have seen Sailor Circus performances. That's an incredible number over the history of its time. So we believe that we're changing the future. We're changing the future for these young people who are engaged in the Circus. In 2013, our nonprofit organization rebranded to become the Circus Arts Conservatory in order to foster the continued growth that we've been seeing, as well as to better advocate for the impact of our outreach. Also in 2013, with the generous support of the Selby Foundation, the CAC made updates to the administrative buildings there on the Bay of Vista campus, and that was to accommodate all of the circus outreach programs that we are hosting and to include all of the staff that we have at one site. Between then and now, we've made more than $150,000 in capital improvements to that campus and the administrative buildings. Since 2016, in the spirit of always finding partners, we partnered with a local company called Cool Today, and they have installed air conditioning in two various facilities at that Bay of Vista location, including the portable buildings that we use for educational training, for education programs, and also the concession stand area. So we're constantly looking at how we can grow and improve. And while I'm talking, you're seeing some of the amazing kids that we impact through our programs. We definitely believe in strong and supportive relationships and partners internally and externally. And we've operated with fiscal integrity through responsible stewardship of the Sailor Circus and this amazing campus. Programmatically, we've had quite a bit of success. In 2012, that first summer when we took over, we launched a summer camp program that piloted with 90 students, and we were so excited. And this last summer, in 2017, we had nearly 700 students. So we've seen a great amount of growth in the youth sector. I also believe that Sailor Circus is so unique to this district and to this area. It's one of the few athletic and performing arts programs that impacts students and integrates students from various elementary, middle, and high schools. Very few programs do that. And for lack of boring you, I just want to name in the last year some of the schools in your district that our students have come from. Abba Academy, Agape Christian, Alta Vista Elementary, Ashton Elementary, Bay Haven, Booker High, Booker Middle, Brentwood Elementary, Brookside Middle, Cardinal Mooney, Center Montessori School, Classical Academy, Fruitville Elementary, Gap School, Gochio, Gulf Gate Elementary, Incarnation, Island Village Montessori, Macintosh Middle, Lakewood Ranch High School, Newgate School, ODA, Philip Shore Elementary, Pine View, Riverview, St. Martha's... I'll take a break. Sarasota Christian, Sarasota High School, Sarasota Middle School, Sarasota Military Academy, Sarasota Suncoast Academy, SMA Prep, South Side Elementary, SSAS, St. Martha's, State College of Florida, Suncoast Polytech High, Tatum Ridge, Venice Elementary, Venice High School, Venice Middle. I think it's an impressive list, all those kids part of Sailor Circus. So part of our agreement, we have some benchmarks to meet every year. Give you a quick report on this last year in 2017 and 18. Over 100 students were engaged in either the fall or spring training of the Sailor Circus. We presented eight holiday performances in December 2017 in the arena facility at Bay of Vista. We presented two spring performances in the CAC Big Top out at Nathan Benderson Park in March. And additionally, and probably most impressively, Sailor Circus presented 31 community performances this year since August, including appearances at the opening ceremony of World Rowing, the Patterson's Age Friendly Festival, Sarasota Arts Alliance's Arts Awards at the Van Waisel, Sarasota Bradenton Farmers Market, Sarasota High School's Community Open House for the Hal Gymnasium, Ovation Lakewood Ranch, Whole Foods Grand Opening, the list goes on and on, but there's more than 31 of them. Students of the Sailor Circus have also made more than 22 media appearances this year, including Daytime in Tampa, ABC 7 Suncoast View, Fox 13 Charlie Belcher, and the list could go on there as well. In the last couple of years, we have launched recreational programming that includes a recreational flying trapeze program and youth classes that are open to the public, so all ages, we can serve all ages there. Most importantly, through the Sailor Circus, we absolutely believe, as Dolly said, these kids are learning life skills. And they're going to show you just a few of them, because it's worth it to see, the type of life skills that they're learning that they'll take into their life. They're learning to stay committed, but they're going to be flexible. Yes. They're going to gain self-esteem and self-confidence through the accomplishments of performance. They balance their priorities, and they're certainly juggling a lot of responsibilities. This young man, in fact, is a Pine View student. Just a quick video to share with you, a highlight of Sailor Circus, the deer and jewel of our district, the dear Sailor Circus. And so while Sailor Circus remains, of course, at the hub of that particular campus, we have also initiated educational programs, using the facility, the arena facility, to do so. And so our circus artists are demonstrating principles of science, engineering, art, math, technology, and communication. We're encouraging creativity and introducing the students to the Circus Arts. We accommodate all learning styles and all levels of students. And we're utilizing the engineering and artistic achievements of the Circus Arts to develop a curriculum that demonstrates math, science, engineering, and art, and most importantly, team problem solving required to produce a contraption-based circus performance. And so the last few years in the arena, we have provided a class curriculum and supplies to fifth-grade classroom teachers, and a performance field trip to the arena of a life-size circus machine at the culmination of this unit. It's an unforgettable, hands-on, dynamic student experience, and we have instructed more than 30,000 students in more than 30 elementary schools here in Sarasota and Manatee Counties. And so we're proud that at the forefront of our mission is education. Just a brief video to show you that. And so not only did we create this educational curriculum, but we're integrating Sailor Circus students into those units as well. So we're really looking at how we can cross all of our different programs to have a big impact. And we're doing so also, as Dolly mentioned, in the nursing homes and care facilities. And we're bringing students there as well, as part of an ensemble. And part of their volunteer hours in the summer, students from Sarasota County school districts are visiting those who most need that visit in the time when they're alone. And so we're so proud of all of that work. All right, a quick update on the actual arena renovation project under the roof. It's a $4 million project. It will be addressing the following areas: installation, and most importantly, or most notably, or most famously, installation of air conditioning there. But it includes several other components: new flooring with a center performance floor, retractable seating for approximately 1,500, fire suppression, life safety system, updated and additional restrooms. If you've ever gone there, you know we need them. Improved ADA compliance and accessibility, very important. The Circus has the ability to reach children of all ages. Let's make it accessible to them. And of course, additional storage and office space to support future program expansion. We're not stopping here. We're going to keep going. So at the end of 2018, we expect that with this renovation by the great Tandem Construction, we'll have a state-of-the-art educational circus training facility. There's a couple of images. Carlson Studios is our architect of what the addition in this part of the project will look like from the Bay of Vista corridor. And inside the arena, new performance floor, new seating, new concession area, new restrooms. Now, that timeline, as I mentioned, takes us through the end of the year. So we have been in talks and really great discussions, big shout-out to Sarasota High School, Mr. Jones, who's been working with us to be sure that during the time that we can't have programming in the arena, what can we do? And so we are working with his team to be sure that we can host programs and training there at the Sarasota High School campus. That really does take us back to our roots, doesn't it? And so that's an exciting thing, and I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Jones, who has shown nothing but great support to us during this journey. And so under consideration for our holiday performances is our Big Top, as available. That goes on the road for a number of months during the summer, but we will revisit, like we did in the spring, performances in the Big Top and other locations. We're currently planning some inaugural events for the spring. The spring will actually, spring 2019 will be the 70th anniversary of Sailor Circus. What better time to open the doors to the alumni and those of the past and those who can come into the future of the Circus with us? And so that, we know this renovation, and leading up to this renovation, has had some impact on our programming. We recognize that we've had to move around a little bit. It's one thing that we are dedicated to, is continuing our programming and keeping the kids actively engaged. We're looking at really short-term pain for the long-term gain. We can definitely serve more students, but in the meantime, as we matriculate through these coming months with Tandem, we know that we may have some programmatic impact. And so we look to you as the board, as our partner, to be sure that we can meet the needs of our students and accommodate all of those things while recognizing that there are going to be some extenuating circumstances. Now, we look to the future, and I want to give you just a little glimpse of the future, because the impact of the arena renovation, it'll allow us to expand youth and educational programming, increase enrollment in Sailor Circus, add recreational circus programs for a range of ages and interests. Let me tell you, Circus is really active in the fitness world right now as well. We can add physical education classes. There is a movement across the nation to infuse Circus Arts into PE. We would look at new programming, including occupational therapy, and we are continuing to explore collegiate opportunities and partnerships for students post-18 to continue to train. And so that's what this arena renovation would allow us to do. We have a very big vision. It's much more broad than just this one piece of the project. So we plan to create a facility and programming where the Circus Arts are available to the general public, to inspire students of all skill levels, of all ages. We plan to continue to expand our ability to offer outstanding professional performances, while also, with that connection, being able to attract artists and instructors and coaches from around the world, to provide a high level of training for students who aspire to be professionals. Although that may be small, it certainly is one of our goals, to be sure that those that want to go out into the professional entertainment world have the skills and knowledge right here from our programming. And we plan to facilitate greater access in programming to area schools, organizations. And so we're going to need a much bigger facility, but we've got 2.2 acres there. And so here is a look at what could be done with the 2.2 acres. Leaving the arena intact and building around it, it's actually quite a deep property. It's quite a bit of property there. There are several portable buildings from the school board there on property. And so we look to add additional educational facilities and training facilities to become a world-class facility. There's another look, as if you were driving from Bay of Vista. As you can see, in particular, we'll work closely with our partners, the school board and Sarasota High School, to be sure that that is part of the corridor and that the integrity and the look of that campus remain intact. Now again, these are just drawings. This is not part of the first phase of the project, but can give you an idea of what can be done there. So legacy, just lastly, we touched on it. Certainly Sailor Circus, America's longest youth circus, is a huge piece of the legacy of this community. We're stewarded by Pedro and Dolly, two of the best in the world. Dolly is in fact actually the only and first circus artist to be recognized by the National Endowment of the Arts as a National Heritage Fellow. It's a very big award given in the Library of Congress, and so I could see no better fitting stewards of the future of programming than Pedro and Dolly. And because of their connection worldwide to the circus community, and because, quite frankly, the Circus Arts Conservatory is an innovative industry leader, we partnered last year with the Smithsonian Folklife Festival. And I mention this because it's just so important to understand that that partnership was a two-year process that took our Big Top, our programming, our educational programming, and 30-plus Sailor Circus students to the National Mall, where more than 2 million visitors experienced the Circus Arts. It was very powerful. It was a once-in-a-lifetime moment for many of our students, and something I think they will carry into their lives. Not to mention, I tell them they should all be putting it on their college application. So in closing, I want to just show you, share one more video. It's a short one, because those of you that couldn't join us on the National Mall should just know the breadth of what this experience was, that it's an ongoing relationship with this Smithsonian institution, and that the Smithsonian has memorialized this opportunity for all time. And so, that video produced by the Smithsonian Institution is in the Library of Congress and features several of our Sailor Circus students, as well as, of course, our queen of the air, Dolly Jacobs. And so, we're serving locally, but we are definitely impacting globally. And so, I want to close our presentation hearing directly from one of our students because I think they are the future of circus. And this young lady is a rising senior in the Sailor Circus program and a student at Pine View here in Sarasota.
Hi. So, I'm, as she said, a rising senior. I'm 17 years old, hoping to go into a professional career in the Sailor Circus. Hopefully, maybe. Circus is special. I know that sounds biased, especially from an organization dedicated to the preservation of circus arts, but it's true. On levels that I find difficult to put into words, circus is different than any physical activity. Circus has the ability and breadth to take different disciplines and weave them into something incredible. Circus inspires the audience, not necessarily to run away with the circus, but circus shows them how amazing the human race is, what we are capable of when we push ourselves beyond our limits, what we can do when we set our goals high enough. Circus is about a toddler dreaming of going to Pluto. Circus is about that middle schooler dreaming of changing the world, making it kinder or safer, or simply ending world hunger. Circus is about a high schooler, a college student, a cousin, an aunt, a mother, a father, a grandfather. It's about children of all ages dreaming, being in awe of what they are capable of accomplishing within their own lifespan, and not even feeling like there is a ceiling or a sky to limit them. That is what Sailor Circus does because while seeing a professional show is awe-inspiring, seeing kids who haven't even taken the SAT yet do the exact same tricks is more moving than any professional show. Thank you.
So, I appreciate your time today and hearing all that we're doing and the updates. And certainly, if there's any questions, happy to-
I can tell you that this lit up very quickly as the presentation started. So, Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I had a question relative to the renovation. And I'm really delighted with the renovation because I was there last year and I thought I was going to roast. It was so hot. But those are important things. The air conditioning is important, but the life safety issues, the ADA compliance, the fire suppression and safety, those are really probably even more important for our students and for people within the building all the time than anything else. So, I'm very happy, and I'm happy that Tandem is your partner. But what are we talking about with we're going to have some of these performances and so forth? How do we accomplish that at Sarasota High?
Well, what we do at Sarasota High School is use it as a training space. Wouldn't be somewhere that we could host the same performances. We'd be looking at our own Big Top as we did in the spring to host those performances. And that's something that's still in discussion. So, as we plan that through, we'll certainly inform you of our plans.
Well, I'm amazed by all this. Dolly, get well, get over this so that you can get back in the sky. I really feel that this is such a wonderful program for our students. It's one thing to look at this program from the aspect of circus, the aspect of performance, but really, it is social and emotional learning, isn't it? It really gives the confidence, the ability to work with others, the teamwork, the awe-inspiring things that we all talk about that are so important to growing up and to being an integral citizen in this world. And for that, I am very grateful. I think that the students that I see at Panera's all the time are all very eager to get over and to rehearse. And it's a great program for our students, and I love what I see.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
So, I have three kids, and one of them really likes the circus. And he was able to eventually coax all three of them to do the camp last summer. Once they did that, they, all three had the bug. Then, they, all three wanted to do trapeze, and they spent the rest of the summer doing trapeze school. In fact, last spring break, this spring break, I mean, that just came up, and they spent the entire spring break doing trapeze school. So, it really does get into the kid's skin. It fosters a love of it. You know, I have a son that I never thought that he would be up there, but just the sheer joy of it. I mean, they really like it, and actually, they're doing pretty good of it. So, I just want to thank you guys for what you guys do. So, I know you guys affect many kids, but I'm just saying personally, you've affected my family. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker.
I just want you to know that I have two grandchildren that have been to Sailor Circus. One graduated last year, and he wants to be a professional circus person. He wants to eventually own his own circus. And it's a dream that I believe he will accomplish because he is one of the most dedicated kids that I've ever seen. I have another one now who is at the Sailor Circus, and he's a freshman at Booker High School. And he's the same thing. He's not as dedicated as the older one was, but he also loves the circus. And it's been good for them. It's really been good for them. I have a couple of questions. One question. If you are going to be performing or practicing at Sarasota High School during the summer, is it your intention to be doing high-wire stuff? Will you be hanging things from the ceiling?
Pedro, you want to ask that?
The answer is yes, but not swinging. So, the East Gym gives us the opportunity to hang single ropes, web sols, like you know what I'm talking about. But we've actually met the team at Sarasota High. It wasn't just Mr. Jones, but his entire athletic team, cheerleading, baseball, and it was a really positive discussion. And so, for example, for flying trapeze, we're looking at the soccer field, which is not being used during the summer, and we'll actually put the flying trapeze behind the goals so it won't even impact the actual field itself. So, we're really working together and making it a great partnership again. And again, as you know, safety is above and beyond everything important to us. So, safety mats, safety belts, all the safety issues go into effect.
I was just concerned if the ceilings could take the weight because Owen has been working at Booker High School, and he's had a trapeze up, what's the thing he works on? Alira?
Alira.
Up there, and it could barely take the weight. So, that's my concern, if that's what you'll be doing.
Sarasota High Gym was built way, way back when they used steel, the stick.
Okay. All right.
I already inspected it.
Also, we were part of the Hal Gymnasium opening, and we worked with the facilities group over there for that gymnasium. The engineers came into play, and we were actually able to hang three points there in a newer facility. So, Facilities has already checked with their building capacity to be sure that we can accommodate. But as Pedro said, we will not be able to optimize it like we optimized the arena, but we'll certainly be able to offer disciplines within this.
That was my only concern. And it's my buddy that told me that what you were going to be doing at Sarasota High School and to make sure that the ceilings could be able to take the weight.
Absolutely.
And also, looking at green space outside for aerial rigs outside. So, there's a few different green spaces that we'll be looking at, which make it a lot, quite easy for us to rig.
Well, thank you. I hope you continue to grow. I'd like to see more students involved. And even though my grandson has run away with the circus, I'm happy for him because he has a direction and a dedication that very few young people has.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown.
Yes, I do want to reiterate. I've seen Pedro and his care about safety at all those shows. He's there himself, looking at the rigs in between the acts and everything. So, I know that that's very important to you. And as always, I'm impressed by Ms. Johnson, right? But that does not show who she is. I mean, when she's in her costume or when she's flying up there, she is just tremendous, and that's when she really shines. But I'm sorry, Jennifer and Pedro, I've got a beef. You had two pictures of her grandchildren, or at least that I saw. Now, granted, my granddaughter was only, and I think Eric can join me, our kids weren't in there.
Our kids weren't in there.
Our kids weren't in there.
Well, that's because mine are older.
Yeah, and they were doing more. I know, I know.
Well, the staff photographer's here, so she'll make note of that.
This $4 million cost, I want to make sure that you reiterate that it's not something the school district is paying for. Who is? I mean, you want to-
Absolutely. It's a $4 million project. The funds are being raised privately, although $1 million of the funding did come from the state of Florida as part of appropriations for our growth, quite frankly, and also to create ADA compliance. So, $1 million of it is from the state of Florida, and the remaining amount of the project has been raised privately.
And from foundations.
Right.
Thank you for all you do.
And also, just one note, just $800,000 to go to accomplish the $4 million project.
Thank you. Dr. Bowden.
So, many of you know I have a 13 and 14-year-old. Neither one of them have ever participated in the circus, but you allowed me to do something that is very, very difficult, which is impress my teenage children. I have had the opportunity to throw out first pitches at baseball games. I've had the opportunity to be in a parade. That didn't impress them, but when I was a guest ringmaster, that impressed them. I speak frequently about a public school district should reflect the community in which they serve. And this is certainly an arts community, but this is a community that does have a rich circus arts history. And thank you for bringing that local flavor into our schools so that they understand the history of Sarasota. It's very, very important as a public school district that we remember who we are and where we came from, and there's no better way to do that than to partner with the Circus Arts Conservatory. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown.
You know, on a serious note, I was at an event, I think it was for, I don't know who it was for, but it was at the Ringling College. And you had a performance there, and I was talking to, it turned out to be the father of one of the girls. We all know that people move here for Pine View, people move here for Oak Park. This family moved here for the circus and the circus school. And I didn't realize people would move. But then also, when I was sitting in the tent up in Washington, DC, there was a man sitting next to me that it almost brought tears to his eyes. He said he was at the closing, their circus aficionados. They were so bummed about the closing of the Ringling Circus, and he was so thrilled that the circus is still going to live and that it was living in these. I mean, when he started to talk, and I told him, "I'm bragging." Yeah, that's my circus. And he started to talk to me. I mean, tears welled up in his eyes because he was so happy to see that the legacy of the circus is gonna live on and through our kids. And it really had an impact on those people who were watching it in Washington, DC. And that's what I wanted to say.
No problem. Thank you. Well, I'd like to echo, well, first, I feel left out if I don't bring up my children's or-
They didn't have the picture.
And real, no, oh, they did. Yes, they did. But quite recently, my oldest had, we've been talking about entering her into summer programs. So, I'm very excited. It's very timely. But really, this is, it's such a beautiful art form, and it has such a deep history. But I think what Mrs. Goodwin said is so true. It tells so many stories and teaches our young children and the future of just how much to love one another and to respect the various differences. And I just, I really can't say enough about it. When I moved to Sarasota, I didn't realize how historical the art form of the circus was. And it's been an amazing learning process since I've been here for 10-plus years, but I love it, and I think it's wonderful that you're integrating it into our education system. So, thank you for everything that you're doing, and I look forward to watching Reagan over summer camp. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go a little backwards on the agenda to welcome two-time Jessica Gonzalez from Venice High School, our student representative. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself for those who haven't met you yet?
Hello. My name is Jessica Gonzalez. My car wouldn't start, and I got stuck on the bridge when I was trying to get over here, which is why it was so late. So, I'm sorry about that. I'm currently a senior at Venice High School. I am the student body president of Venice High. And to update you all, before, last time I was here, you all, it was before the college acceptances came out. And I was recently accepted to Stanford University, which is where I will be attending. Thank you.
You're Florida the West.
Yes. Or as my dad likes to say, Harvard with better weather. So, we're all very excited, my family. It was really exciting to hear about that, and I'm very happy that you all invited me back again because I really enjoyed the last meeting. So, thank you for having me.
Well, congratulations and welcome back. We'll have you anytime. Moving to the next item, superintendent's report.
Just very quickly, I take lots of opportunity to brag on our students, our teachers, and our principals, but rarely do I take a moment to brag on our own. So, before Scott Limpy clears that back door, yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak at the dedication of the covered walkway at Sarasota High School. And that was a preservation effort of the Sarasota Architectural Foundation. But that was also a time to reflect upon the Sarasota High School campus. And if you look at that campus today, the way it serves students, the way that Building Four and Five were preserved, the way that we have literally changed the front door of Sarasota High School from School Ave to Baja Vista, the way that Sarasota High School now has embraced its very unique architectural history. There was a time when all of that was very much in doubt, and we had an opportunity to talk about that yesterday. There was a time back in 2012 in which we contemplated demolishing Building Four and Five. And it was through a series of community meetings, which really talked about the power of partnership. That would not have happened without the leadership of Scott Limpy, and he did not have the opportunity to attend yesterday's dedication. But every speaker that spoke from the Architectural Foundation and from the community mentioned Scott specifically and how that campus was preserved, the way that that campus serves students. And I just want to recognize him for his leadership on that particular project. But everything he touches in this district turns to gold. And I'll stop there because I'm probably gonna pay for that later. But thank you, Scott. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Hearing of Citizens. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the timer flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you need to begin to summarize. You must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note the respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with a speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sound or approval or disapproval, including clapping. I have one card. Robin Waters.
Robin Waters.
Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Robin Waters. I live in Nakomas with my family and I'm a volunteer with the Florida Chapter of Moms' Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We're here today to urge the school board to reject the recently passed Guardian program that would allow districts to turn over responsibility for the safety of our children to armed school staff. While the recently passed state law following the Parkland shooting does much to address school safety and gun violence, we do not support provisions that allow for the arming of school staff. You've all heard the line, "The only way to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun." This seems to be the misguided motivation for the Guardian program. So, let's think about Dallas in the summer of 2016. During a demonstration in downtown Dallas, a sniper targeted law enforcement on patrol, shooting 12 police officers, killing five. The only contribution of dozens of armed open carry activists present during the shooting was confusion. According to law enforcement, the presence of openly armed civilians only complicated and delayed their ability to identify and neutralize the shooter. And it was ultimately a police robot-operated bomb that stopped the gunman. Let's think about Joe Jamundio, who was armed in Tucson when Senator Gabby Giffords was shot and who admitted that he was within seconds of shooting the wrong person. And remember that it was an unarmed civilian who tackled and subdued the shooter. And even the most upstanding American citizens, the most responsible concealed carry permit holders, who would presumably undergo training, are only human. They lose their temper. They exercise poor judgment. They misinterpret situations. They might leave their gun laying around by mistake in a bathroom. Think about all this in the context of our schools, surrounded by young children. Gun violence prevention organizations and experts, teachers and school staff, and law enforcement overwhelmingly oppose arming teachers and staff. Let's instead make sure our school staff is trained to recognize and report red flags when students or other community members behave in ways that indicate they may be a danger to themselves or others. Let's make sure every school has emotional health services available for students who are having a hard time. Arming school staff is not the answer here and it does nothing to keep our schools safer. Moreover, schools that have allowed employees to carry guns have had difficulty obtaining insurance coverage. Some liability insurance providers have declined coverage to these schools while others have increased annual premiums, stretching already tight school budgets. Listen to school safety experts, to teachers and school staff, and to moms like me. Please commit to opting out of the Guardian program. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Well, you went too fast because I believe it.
Corrections.
Yeah, we have one change and one addition. Item seven, approval of the instructional classified personnel report. Addendums one and two have been added. Also, item 13, approval of Pine View's math challenge team to attend the finals for the mathematics math modeling M3 challenge in New York on April 29th through the 30th. This is a last-minute addition and that's just because the team was just recently selected to attend, but we felt the need to get it on this agenda so we could finalize travel plans.
Thank you.
Move the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote. And the motion passes five to zero. There are no items pulled for comment. Under new business, may I entertain a motion?
I move for approval of the 2017, 2018, and the 2018, 2019 administrative salary adjustment as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none, please vote. And the motion passes five to zero. Moving to item number 20, do I have a motion?
I would move the board approved to advertise the revisions to the school board policy 3.90. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Mrs. Brown?
Just a brief update of why we're doing it. Explanation.
Dr. Bowden?
Yes, this brings us into compliance with state law. This is a policy that we pulled out of order in our policy review. I believe it's been workshopped on two different occasions. So, not only was it workshopped, but there were some changes that were requested. It was brought back to a second workshop. And this is the formal action that follows those two workshops.
For clarification, this is to advertise, but we've already advertised it. We're advertising again because there have been amendments.
That's correct.
Okay.
There were further amendments, only a couple. Based on legislation in the past month.
Correct.
So, we were a little too fast.
So, it's the second time advertising different content.
Correct.
Very good. So, any other comments?
Jessica's position.
All those members, please vote.
That's good enough for me.
And the motion passes five to zero. Item number 21.
Remove the approval of the new job description for security system specialist.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
You want to give us an explanation of why we're making this change?
Yes, it is part of a package of job descriptions. You'll see a number of them on your next school board agenda, but this is a modification to this position, which will allow us to begin the advertisement and filling of this position. You'll see a number of positions coming out of our security department related specifically to the capacity building that we discussed previously. But you'll also see positions related to today's conversation make its way to the board in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you. Board members, please vote. And the motion passes five to zero. Moving on to announcements and communications. Mr. Robinson?
I just want to make a little statement. There's been some stories in the press regarding some text messages I sent and I felt a sense of obligation to address the situation. I was at a board workshop, working hard to try to reach a compromise, and I was in the minority and feeling the way I should have simply accepted the situation and moved on. However, my passion subject turned to frustration. I sent some texts that were clearly based on the emotions I felt at the time and which disparaged you and other board members, and for that, I'm sorry. I regret my actions because it's important for us as a board to be able to work together for the good of Sarasota County kids and keep the trust of our community. However, I do want to make something clear to the newspaper stories did not. The texts were sent after the board had already made its decision, after the policy decisions were made by our partners. Although this doesn't change the nature of the text messages, which I regret, I want people to understand that I was not in a position to influence the decision of the board. I want to thank all the people who have reached out to me to support me during this time. I'm sorry, Jay. The experience has been humbling. I can't do it with Christine here. I'm very sorry. And I'll try to be better. As a father of three children, it's important to me to show that you don't quit simply because you made a mistake. You own up to it, learn from it, and try to do better. I look forward to working with the board as we find viable solutions to the challenge of increased school security and others that will surely surface in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker?
Well, I appreciate your apology. I would like to read a statement that I have prepared. When we were elected to this board, I would have hoped it was because we wanted strong public schools and we would understand the benefit of public education, not just for the community, but for the students we serve. When I ran in 1992, it was to be the voice for children, as they do not have a voice. And that is what I've tried to do over the last 20 years. And that is what it should be about, the students we serve. When I read the text messages, I certainly did not see someone who values public education and is looking out for the best interest of our students. I saw someone who wanted to control the system and get even with the superintendent for whatever reason. This is not about you or Todd, it's about our students. I don't see how you can walk into another one of our schools or the landings to be effective as a board member. If you truly cared about our kids and this district, you would step aside. The only reason you would stay is personal gratification. Our students and their education is a priority for this community and for this board. And that should always be a priority and nothing else should get in its way.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
As the board member who was so famously disparaged, you know, I'm not going to go word for word and item for item. I mean, I don't necessarily agree with the timeframe that was given. You know, I think some of those comments were made in the beginning and then also comments were made after I sent out an email asking for us to pull together. And then, I guess, I became Superman. But I too had support from the community. But this isn't what we're about. And I think this morning, I mean, and I want to hand it to the superintendent and our staff for moving beyond that circus that we had at the last board meeting and at the last workshop and come together with a plan that I do believe is going to be very, very good for this district. It exceeded my expectations of where we could go. And I appreciate that while others didn't take the things that I said in my emails and my suggestions seriously, that you did. I mean, you listened to what I was saying and you brought back things to what I was saying. And we are going to be doing something different and I'm sure you'll be hearing more about it in the future. But I'm glad that it was the safety and security of our students and our staff that was foremost in your discussions with your staff these past two weeks. And I am overjoyed about the behavior health component of it that we have put forward. Like I said, if I could have just waved a wand and said, "If I had $1 million, what would I do with this to help our kids?" That behavior health component with the restorative justice and how we'll be able to work with our own officers to help them be a better part of it is really moving us forward. And I am sorry that our staff had to go through that exercise of cutting where they wanted to because, you know, it isn't what some people call low-hanging fruit. There were people on those cut lists and I want to apologize for them, that they had to go through that because I can't imagine that it wasn't a very pleasant time for them. I'm glad that we were able to move forward and get past that and that you came back with a plan for us that we did not have to make any cuts in our schools and what we are doing in our education programs for our kids. And in fact, with this behavior health program, I think we will really enhance what we're doing at our kids. And I know that the Sure Group, when they see that we're going to be expanding the restorative justice program, will probably be cheering in the aisles at their churches this Sunday. And thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, I just want to say, it's been a good day. It's been a very good day. And I want to compliment the superintendent on the items that he brought us in safety and security and the way he brought those issues to us today. I think that that was very helpful to us. I want to thank the staff for their hard work and all the teachers and all of the administrators in our schools because we know we have the best schools and the best school district in the state. And above all else, that's always something that I know in my heart we have. But you know, there's a famous expression that I try to live by and it's by Wayne Dyer, who's no longer with us. And it's, "If you have your choice between being right or being kind, always choose kind." And Todd and I got into a discussion about kindness yesterday and I had tears in my eyes and he had tears in his eyes because we were talking about each of us are fathers. And I just want to say that I think we can move past this. I think that we all learn from experiences. We all have to be kind to each other. We all have to work together, all five of us, as a board. And I want you all to know, I want Eric to know, I want...
Of us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six of us, sorry. I didn't mean to exclude our important superintendent, but I just wanted...
A gentleman on either end.
I thought you were excluding me.
And Art Hardy.
Seven. And Jessica, eight.
But I just wanted to say that I am committed. I can only change what I am in charge of, and that's myself. But I am committed to our working well together, to our making our students, our teachers, our staff, and our community proud of us and getting past this and going forward for the good of this community because I think that we all have it in us to do that. And, you know, I say that we go forward and do great work from this point on.
Thank you.
No, I echo a great deal of what Ms. Goodwin said. I, as I started off this meeting today, I thought we did a tremendous job at the workshop. I came in today not knowing how it was going to go, but the reality is, is over the four years I've been on this board, there are areas we disagree and that's okay. But it's how we disagree and we lead by example because we are here for our students and we cannot let our personal disagreements erode the very important work of this board. And I know we can do it. Today was a perfect example at the workshop. So, I, and I thank each one of you for that. And I look forward again to continued positive work for our district, for our students. Follow-up announcements, policy review workshop, May 1st in 2018 at 4:00. And the next regular board meeting is May 1st, 2018 at 6:30. We are adjourned.